Yeah.
The black smoke.
He was stealing.
Right. We are.
Right. Everyone's in, yes.
Okay. I will call.
Eric, no.
Here.
Mr. Andaline?
Here.
Mr. Greenfield?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Reed is absent. Mr. Rivera?
Yeah.
Mr. Merrick?
Yeah.
Notice of this meeting was provided to the Burnsville News and Courier-News, required municipal clerk, and posted on the municipal bulletin board on December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic of which this is one nation, in the name of the Constitution, the Constitution of Justice. To the June twelfth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Burns and Borough Council, this meeting is being conducted in person in the council chambers and borough hall. It is being broadcast live on YouTube and on Zoom to make it as convenient as possible for residents to attend the meeting. Members of the public who are here in person, those attending remotely on Zoom, will be given the opportunity to comment at appropriate times during the meeting in accordance with the following guidelines. Members of the public will be allowed to speak during the open session and during formal public hearings upon the agenda, including public hearings by ordinances. Comments will be limited to the three minutes per speaker, which will be monitored and enforced by the borough clerk. Comments containing offensive, profane, or indecent language or language constituting hate speech will not be permitted. Remote participants will be muted unless they are unmuted by the clerk, and remote participants will not be able to unmute themselves. The clerk will mute remote speakers at the expiration of their three minutes of allotted time, or if they make any inappropriate or offensive comments. All speakers, whether in person or on Zoom, shall state their name and address before making their comments. Speakers on Zoom shall activate their cameras so that they can be seen by members of the governing body and the audience. Failure of the governing body to provide a live broadcast of this meeting or technological problems encountered during the course of the meeting that affect remote viewing and/or participation will not invalidate this meeting or any action taken, including but not limited to the adoption of any ordinance, resolution, or motion. I just got a text from the chance at seven twenty-five is his estimated time. So hopefully he'll be here shortly. We'll talk stuff. Yes, there will talk there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So, uh, our presentation tonight is downtown Burnsville on the light pole banner project. Which I also witnessed first hand, so. Pretty cool.
Very cool. Um, we will show like a little video, ten seconds with my, uh, slides.
The five first of them.
Yeah, please, I'm grateful. Um, over the last few years, we've had these fabulous hometown heroes banners, and every time they go up, I can't help but notice how much it beautifies the town. Uh, and granted, they are very well done. I had the pleasure of being a part of that whole project when it was first launched and picking which one would look best and what have you, and it was just, it was a really nice experience and it came out really well, and I just love seeing them. And I know the community loves them as well, not just for the way they look, but also obviously honoring our veterans is fully important to the community. Um, so there's a number of things with this project that we are hoping to accomplish. Um, so let me start with about and why we're here. If we can go to the next one, please. Uh, so what we are, um, considering is working with a company called Breeze Automated Banner Systems, and I first encountered them, um, at the Main Street Conference earlier this year, and they had a, a display there, and we'll, again, I'll have a video of previous, you can see what we're talking about. Uh, but essentially, it's an automated system, so it's essentially a power drill with, uh, a power drill, power drill with a bit, um, and that allows it to go up and down automatically to easily put the banners on and take them off every time you need to do that. Now, so far, we've only been doing the hometown heroes, which plays a year. Why do you need an automated system? So we are hoping to expand the project a little bit more. The banners can stay as they are. We don't need new banners. We can keep them with this new system. Uh, but we are hoping to expand a little bit more to offer messages of welcome. If it's a holiday time, say, you know, after holidays, whatever we would say, uh, but also showcasing specific events and things going on in the town. So, uh, this October, we're gonna be doing a lot of, um, history-related activities, so on banners having a person of note, uh, a location of note, a story of note, whatever that might be. Um, and obviously, they would be visually appealing. It would have something terrible, but having various concepts of banners throughout the year, um, so that things can be refreshed and upgraded, and it can lend to the beautification of the town. Um, and then offering a little bit more for folks to look at too, which could potentially lead to slowing down some traffic, which especially on our main corridor is an issue, and everybody knows, especially in your heads, how much I love the traffic in town. Um, so we're hoping that that is a, a part of it as well, and then obviously adding that color vibrance for the community. Uh, this system is also something that we could consider as wayfinding signage, at least preparing for wayfinding signage moving forward, because we have two-on-two, we have a limitation of the state highway. Adding more signs, we, we tried to do the welcome to Burnsville, and that was next to impossible, so, uh, you know, having this already up on a banner alleviates the need for a post, a new sign, approval, et cetera. We put, um, various wayfinding elements along where that banner goes with this system. Uh, and Breeze, the company that we've been speaking with, uh, are actually working on wayfinding to go with this system as well. So it's just something to consider for the future, but if we put this system in place now, then at least we're prepared for that moving forward. There's one less hurdle to jump. Next, please. So that was what the program is, but why do we want to do it? Um, it's very powerful for promoting the community, and it's not just about the events that we do. It could necessarily be, uh, you know, the, the students are graduating high school, congratulations, class of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, whatever case they may. Um, again, it could be, like I mentioned before, the history and honoring our history and our, our culture, who we are as a community. Um, so along those lines, you know, beautifying the space is what I'm looking for. Um, it also in a way helps support the small businesses, because the more that folks see are going on in town, uh, the more likely they are to stop and check out and see what's going on and know that things are happening, so they can put it on their calendar. It's an event coming up. Uh, Restaurant Week could be a great example of something that we could promote right after the Fourth of July, when the hometown heroes comes down, the Restaurant Week up, and all the cars that do drive through town, even though it's summer in the summertime, they still have an opportunity to know, oh, they have a Restaurant Week. I need to write that down, or I need to know that when we come back. Um, and then, of course, it gives us an opportunity to share our voice. You know, a lot of conversations have happened up until now, and our folks are, you know, well, we don't wanna be like Summerville or like all these other towns, but at the same time, you know, we have a solid framework to get us ready to be as successful as those towns while having our own voice in the process. And these banners can really share that message as well, so that people know who we are, that we are Burnsville, and this is what it means to be Burnsville, which is pretty cool. Next, please. Uh, so this is the suggestion of how the framework of this program could work. Um, it is the automated banner system, and I think now would probably be a great time, Anthony, you know, when switching to that video. It's literally.
Yeah, yeah, we saw, yeah. Do you guys, do you want to just explain the process now to get those banners up?
Uh, like how it would work?
No, how do you do it now?
Oh, how we do it now? Uh, from what I have been told, it takes days, not just hours, but days for DPDW to go and put those banners in. Um, and then they're borrowing a bucket truck from, uh, Glenn Miller's fabulous, but it's his company, so there's liability on that as well. Um, so that would, this process would eliminate the need for a bucket truck, number one. You really just need a ladder to just go up, slide the banner on the two prongs, and then drill it out of the place. So as you can see with this video here, you slide the banner on, off, and then it automatically goes up with the drill. That's what we want to do there. Um, and they do have a very, uh, high-rated wind, whatever it's called. Uh, so the wind comes through, and it's very strong, and whatever, it actually doesn't, um, it, it, it's, I don't know, high-rated. I can't think of the words' fault, but, um, there's another video on their website that shows very strong winds. You can see the tree blowing and the banner not even moving. Uh, there's a black one, so don't be alarmed by the silver coloring. Black one itself, just like the one we go for, because obviously our light poles go to black, oh, seven. Uh, there's not gonna be a stark, ugly mechanism there. Uh, thank you. Yes, I'm a first. I would not go for that if it was chrome. I don't care for chrome myself. Um, so that's, that's really what it comes down to as well, is alleviating the burden on our DPDW, and for you guys to have to go in there and schedule and, you know, do all that work, and that takes days to put up and take down, especially if we wanna do more banners throughout the year. If the, if the decision is, no, we don't wanna do any banners throughout the year, it's hometown heroes only, then it's probably not necessary to spend the money to put the system up, um, because it's only a couple times a year, but at the same time, I mean, it's a really, really great use of a product that just gets it up and done in no time. Um, our design team, obviously with my, um, you know, coordination, would be the ones responsible for making sure that it's going up and down. We would be scheduling this ahead of time. Uh, so we would be preparing an annual calendar, saying, these are the dates, and this is what's going out when, and we would be set for the year, so everybody knows what's going on when. And then our team, but again, um, will work with Breeze directly and just, you know, make it happen. Breeze also can come and do the install for us, um, which would allow them to maintenance the systems and be there and make sure nothing's broken in the process. So if they have somebody else do it, and it gets broken, then nobody knows why, and they have to pay for it, so they can also come in and do that for us too. Um, next slide. So this is what a simple timeline could look like, and this is based on, you know, the rest of this year. Um, we're gonna have a Restaurant Week going up right after the Fourth of July. Um, after that, we could do something like Welcome to Burnsville, something that we wanted to do with the big sign, um, that we were not able to do, so we can do it in this format instead. Uh, honoring our history with all the history events that are coming up in October. The hometown heroes, I believe, goes back up for Veterans Day through the month of November. I think that was correct on as far as the dates go there. Uh, and then having some sort of holiday message for the end of the rest of the year. Um, for next year, this is a really great opportunity for all the centennial things that we've got going up there. Um, so this could be really, really beneficial to help promote all of the things that we're doing, and also the history and various aspects of, uh, what's gonna be going on next year. Um, but again, you know, we did Faces of Burnsville with Cultural Arts, Cultural Arts Committee, uh, a couple of years ago. You know, that would be a really great opportunity to have them, their faces on the banners. You know, there are lots of opportunities that we can be creative about moving forward with what shares our culture for Burnsville. Um, again, I wanna reiterate that hometown heroes, none of that will change, not, not, it's not affected. We can still use the same banners. You don't have to buy new ones. Um, and then our creation department can still manage that process. It's not something that we necessarily need to take over, so nothing to change on that front. Um, we just get the system fit in. Um, and I should make sure that you know that I'm not asking you for money. I've already done that this year. Um, we're still working on that part, but, uh, this in part would be paid for by, um, Main Street New Jersey did just release a small grant for this year, thankfully. Uh, so we did, uh, put a portion of that in there, and then the rest would come out of our budget as well. Um, the project all in is about ten or twelve thousand dollars to put the automated system in, get a whole new banner up, um, and then have them install and take down at least two times.
How much do you set up banners if you're doing a banner or if you're doing a dance?
Um, I have to ask him that, uh, because he included the banner in the price, so I didn't, I didn't go further to figure out what that necessarily would be. Yeah, it was really just a long some to kind of get the, the first thing.
Yeah, capital has to improve the content, correct.
Well, that's part of why I'm here today. So if you can do the next one, three, Anthony, because, uh, those are, those are the three. So, um, the approvals that we're looking for from you guys would be determining whether or not the automated system can go in place, uh, expanding that banner program and what that entails, and then, you know, working with you guys or the annual calendar and how exactly you want to approach that process. Yes.
For Restaurant Week, there's, uh, there's no way you could reuse the banners again?
If we put dates on it?
No, I know. Obviously, you don't have the date, but, yeah, but wouldn't it be better to just do Burnsville Restaurant Week?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Uh, there's no sort of like second week in July. It's always the second in July or something like that. If you haven't done it in July, you used to do it in January, so this is.
For whatever, whatever, and then you could reuse it.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I mean, that's, that's the goal. I asked them to do a quick mock-up, and this is what they gave me, and this was like Friday, so, uh, we definitely have some, uh, back and forth to do as far as designs go, but, you know, the, the idea is it's, it's more about the idea and figuring out whether or not this is something that makes sense for us, and if it does, then we can go back into the specifics and take more time to make sure we do the right things.
Yeah.
Um, but if you want to approve the designs, we can certainly do that. Uh, again, the, the idea is for calendar, we schedule it at least a year in advance. Uh, that way, it allows us all the opportunity to say, great, 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 okay, let's do it, and then twelve months goes by, and then we can talk about it again. We don't have to do this every single time we move the banners up, which get adopted back.
And I would think we need to get to the level of approving your copy, um, you know, you can just run it by Nancy and Jack or the concept of just of what their banners, like Restaurant Week.
Yeah, just, yeah, just the concept. Yeah, kind of like the timeline you had before. Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, uh, I would have assumed so. I'd care about that. Yeah. I would have assumed so, yes. Okay. Um, the only, uh, final thing I wanted to share with everyone, um, it's not just really about the banners, but I wanted to make sure that you're all aware of what we are doing. Last time I talked to you guys about what has happened, it was our annual report, which is December. Um, Anthony, if you could do the last slide for us, that would be great. Um, so just so you know what we're planning on working on this summer, I actually just hired an intern. She started today. Yay. Uh, she's gonna be great. She's, uh, doing marketing work with us, so, um, and she's gonna be wonderful. So I'm very excited to have the help in the office, so we can execute a lot of these things. Uh, but this summer, we're gonna be working on doing a walking audit of downtown, uh, just determining the, uh, safety and pedestrian needs in the district. We are constantly focusing on cars and parking and traffic, and I'm really hoping that we can start shifting that conversation, because I can't tell you how many businesses keep telling me, nobody's walking around. I want people to walk in the store, and it never happens, so we need to start testing that in some way. So we're going to start with doing this audit to see what it means to walk in our town. Um, I did get some really great contacts with New Jersey Transit. Really excited about this. Very early. Um, to, uh, they're gonna do a site visit. We're just working on scheduling that to check out the train station itself and beautifying the space um, and making sure it doesn't smell like the human, you know, what in the back, um, and a number of other things, and they're really excited about working with us. So there's gonna be some art discussed, and it's gonna be some, um, updates of the grassy areas there, so really excited about that. So I'll be coming too. I do also wanna make sure all of you know that Main Street America is coming to Burnsville on July eighteenth, and they're going to be touring the district. Um, they do want to speak to mayor and council or whomever is available that day that might want to kind of talk about it without me in the room, so you feel free to say whatever you need to say. So I do invite you, if you can, I think there's like a forty-five minute block. So it's not really a whole lot of time. They're gonna be meeting with a lot of different folks. Um, but this is a big one. It's not the state level. It's the national level programs. Check it in on us and see how things are doing and what we need from them. Um, we are working on building, uh, a business launch bootcamp. Uh, hopefully, we'll have that launched sometime in January, but we are partnering with SOR, and I've had great calls for New Jersey Business Action Center as well. They're gonna be providing us tons of resources to help folks learn how to start their business. Uh, and the goal here is that at the end, we'll do like a, a short take type of event and get folks to compete for their business idea and give them some grant funding, and they open their business in town and hereby fill in our empty circles. So, um, the folks I talked to so far are very excited about this, and I think it's gonna be a really great program for the community. Uh, of course, just so you know, movie nights are coming up at the pool. Um, we do have an adult night, twenty-one, and over only on July eighteenth. Um, so please do keep that out of your list. Um, and if you can see, right next to our logo is another logo that says Main Street Burnsville. Um, it's the unofficial announcement that we are going to be rebranding. We will be launching this officially sometime in September, roughly around the five K. Um, but we will be switching from downtown Burnsville to Main Street Burnsville. And, uh, there's a number of reasons for this, but the number one is to be a little bit more inclusive. We are covering the entire district, so it's important that everyone knows that we're not just downtown. We're nothing to do with redevelopment. It is just, you know, what we do near Main Street. So, um, for that coming up soon as well. So if there's any other questions or any other information I can share with anyone, I'm happy to do so.
So just a quick consensus, are we okay with this whole process?
Right.
We're not?
Well, sorry.
Go ahead.
Kind of. Um, when the video came on, which was great, the demo video, it showed Mark Mayer. Do you know what their other clients are, the first?
Uh, I believe Garfield is one of them. Uh, they're a New Jersey-based company.
Yeah.
Um, so I don't know all of their clients, but I know he has quite a few in, in the state.
Yeah, so did he provide, provide any referrals or?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, Mark Mayer is a great referral. We definitely brought him up a few times. Uh, the gentleman, Hallie Stern, actually came into town and looked at the banners that we have, and, you know, he, he said they're all great. Obviously, it's a manual system, so it's a little bit different, um, but he said it's, it's a perfect place.
Do you know how many holes we have?
Uh, we have twenty-nine banners. So some holes have two. Correct, yes, yes. So we have twenty-nine in total. Yeah.
So there'll just be one banner each hole.
Any other holes that have two, then we'll be two.
Two.
We are, it's a direct replacement, so it'll look exactly the same. It's just it'll be that automated system.
And the last question I have is, I've seen them where it's like every so often one of the banners is, these banners sponsored by, you know, whatever business.
Yeah.
Do you think that would be something that we consider, like advert, like allowing a business to advertise on those banners?
Just to be a sponsor.
Yes. Uh, so this is how towns make it a lucrative program, by offering that. Uh, I'm hesitant to do that right out of the gate, only because, you know, we, we wanna do this to beautify the town, and when we start having all these promotional things going on, we're gonna be like, ew, we're advertising, you know, you know, things go. So right now, the goal is not necessarily to do that. In the future, if we find this program is very successful, and they're knocking down our doors, and we can find a way to make it look nice in the process, then sure, we'll open the door up to that. But right now, it's not meant to be a money-making opportunity, or at least cut out itself as far as cost go. When our, when our budget comes around every year, we will simply just have a line item to account for whatever needs to be done with the, the systems and getting the banners in and out.
You, you don't wanna have too much verbiage on them, because you don't want people to be looking at that and trying to read and squinting while there's somebody crossing across the wall and then we're not in the first one.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, so it is wild, yeah, it will be quick. Yeah, it's, it's like a billboard, right? And you have about three seconds to read whatever the, the information is. So, yeah, there, it's not meant to have lots of small writing on it. It's like the Restaurant Week when they're, you know, date what it is, and then they can find out what.
Although when you're sitting at the light, it gives you something to do.
Yeah, it's, it's really great real estate for promotion, right? So you can just put a QR code on there, and then when we get more people walking around, yeah, they can scan the QR codes and have it, right? So right now, for the first six months, first year, I'm, I'm all about keeping things simple sometimes and just starting small and working our way it up.
Seeing how we use it and all, yeah.
Right, and see what kind of feedback we get. Um, you know, that's, that's the most important thing. I always like to listen and, and hear what people are saying about these things, and so we wanna make sure that we're doing it right.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Nancy about the, because if, once they go up and then the company's gonna do it first, going, you know, changing the banners out, is that gonna be the responsibility of the DPDW still? And, and then I just wanted to get Nancy's kind of.
Is.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, that's our, our discretion. So like I mentioned, it could be, uh, a line item in our budget every year, and they replace it five times, and that's, that's it. That's what we decided to do for our annual calendar. And we just simply pay for them to come out and do it.
The company, the, the first company.
Yes, yeah, because they, they do.
Those, this, this specialty ones, and DPDW can continue to do the hometown.
Right, right. And we can very easily show them. I mean, I could probably go on a ladder and do it.
Yeah, and we can be quicker for that. Take them three days to do it.
Well, yeah, and that's, that's the idea, because we have obviously to do a lot of other things as well, so, yeah, we don't want that.
And actually, they were also at the, uh, Conference of Mayors in Vegas I went to, and saw it displayed. It is, it is really very impressive.
I mean, it's seconds. The one to put the drill in and banners on, it's literally seconds. It's up, it's taught, and it's, it's defier to get some reverence, so.
I mean, I was gonna ask too about how many we have, because I've driven through some towns now. I think the, the one I'm recalling, maybe it's got planes there. I mean, of course, there's a thousand plus kids integrated there, or group five. We don't have that many, but we only have twenty-nine. I was thinking about for the seniors for schools, that's what they have in such places.
Yeah, um.
That's so cute.
It is cute. Target, it's like, really nice freak out. Yeah. Anyway. There's, there's opportunities. There's opportunities, congratulations, of course. Yeah, yeah, that, that might be what we have to do, but eventually, once we get more light poles in from the rest of town as well, you know, there's obviously room to grow. So, starting small, making it work.
Yeah, exactly.
I think we're good with it. So, yeah, it's the best. Thank you. Progress.
Fabulous. I'm sure how I would do it for us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy. All right.
So Nancy, are you okay?
Um, I mean, I talked to John earlier today, and he said that while the process will be faster, um, because they, well, they didn't need to put up a ladder, they'll need two guys, but the actual putting it up will be faster if they have to do it six times a year, you know, with drilling. So I was hearing that, at least for the first year, the company's gonna do it again, though that's, that's good.
All right. Please hear. All right, thank you, Olivia.
My pleasure.
Oh, we are now at the open session for items not listed for a public hearing. So again, all the things I said in the beginning, apply. Make sure you give us your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Uh, and again, this is not a Q and A. It's an opportunity for the public to make a comment. So, um, if you would like to, guys, we have some people on Zoom, um, and some of you are. So, uh, if you can raise your hand on Zoom with the little hand icon or turn on your camera and wave at us, that would be great. So we know you wanna make a comment. I'm not seeing any. No, so I will close the open session. All right, I will open the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-three, nineteen sixty-six, and ordinance extending permitted sidewalk sale hours and amending Article twelve of the Borough Land Use Ordinance entitled zoning. And we do have, uh, we did discuss this at the planning board last week, and they comply with it as well. And I, we have the letter with their, to the resolution ship that they passed. So would anyone in the public like to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Um, Diane, you wanna move that?
I move to pass ordinance twenty twenty-three dash nineteen sixty-six on final reading and adoption as published. Um, second.
Vote for, please.
Mr. Andaline?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Merrick?
Yes.
All right, Jay, you wanna move the next one?
Uh, I move that ordinance twenty twenty-three dash nineteen sixty-nine, salary ordinance for employees of the Borough of Burnsville or police dispatchers be introduced by title past on first reading, published according to law, and then a public hearing scheduled for the meeting beginning at seven PM, Monday, June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
opposed? All right. Hey, there, bring the next one.
Um, I move that ordinance twenty twenty-three dash nineteen seventy, and ordinance amending salary ordinance twenty twenty-three dash nineteen thirty-five be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law, and a public hearing is scheduled for the meeting seven PM, Monday, June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Ow. Got the wrong one. I moved that ordinance twenty twenty-three dash nineteen seventy-one, bond ordinance, bond ordinance providing for improvements to municipal property in and by the Borough of Burnsville. The county of Somerset, New Jersey appropriating one million seven hundred thousand dollars therefore in authorizing the issuance of one thousand, one million six hundred and fifteen thousand, uh, bonds or notes of the Borough for financing such appropriation be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law. That public hearing is scheduled for a meeting beginning at seven PM, Monday, June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four. Sorry. And this is for some of the dam and the sidewalks.
Yes.
Into the rest of the dam and the burn them. Right, okay. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
I'm opposed? Oh, we have two of our signatures, so we still have four opposed, so we're good. All right. Um, Christine, you wanna do the next one?
I move that ordinance twenty twenty-three dash nineteen seventy-two appropriating the sum of one hundred eighty thousand for various equipment and improvements be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law, and that a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning at seven PM, Monday, June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Could have a lot of public hearings.
That's for the bathtub?
Yeah, some total works.
So the sewer, sewer.
Oh, sewer? Was that the backup?
Sorry, sorry.
So, hold on one. Yeah, there's a trade.
Yeah, there's a twelve thousand dollar creator.
That also has been fired.
He's cheating.
Yeah, it's your job here.
Well, part of it, I said, so what's a, what's a pista grid replacement? Oh, wow. It says engineering for pista grid replacement. Maybe that's the word. I think there was something sewer in there.
Okay, I thought it was sewer.
Yeah.
There was something. It's for all the sewer equipment, and it's coming out of the, uh, sewer capital.
Right.
And so it's not being bonded or anything, and then later you have a resolution which authorizes the trade in of the, um, backhoe from. backhoe from, um, not the contract, but that cell.
Yeah, this was a pickup truck with a lift gate and, and, and there, it's ceramic, so that's sewer, okay. All right, we're up to resolutions, um, and we added, you added another N B C license. So how many are we still missing?
We're just missing one of the active ones and the two inactive ones have to get a little length mistaken. Then they have a little bit longer than June thirtieth to renew, so we're all of them.
What's the active one we don't have?
I, I forget which one, I'll, I'll, I did this for.
Yeah, that has to be on the next.
Yeah, I got it, I know, yeah.
Uh, anything on here we wanna do separately? Yeah. Twenty-three dash one twenty-five. Um, on one twenty-five, uh, again, we don't have the moment, have only, I mean, this is, uh, me doing this? Or, I mean, I'm just gonna, we don't have anybody right now appointed to Quimby and the Quimby committee has been meeting and I have been asking for information and, uh, the contracts and things for Quimby. So that's probably the extra charges.
Well, he said that he thought that just for Audi and, um, Palmer, Palmer, right, and Anthony, so like he said, Audi and Palmer, he thought another five thousand.
Until those two.
Until, until the, not charging us. Till the developers take over.
Okay. And at what point do the, speaking of that?
You asking?
No.
At what point do the developers take over the legal piece?
Uh, once you sign redevelopment agreement.
Okay.
Uh, but each redevelopment agreement will go over tonight, the draft of it and the executive, um, because it's all down, so you, they pay for some of the walk-in, so it's about five thousand.
Okay. So this five thousand that's on this, they're gonna?
So, uh, you have two redevelopment agreements that are gonna talk down the executive. One is for the Audi site, the other one is for Palmer's site. The provisions involved in them, uh, that they have to post ad pro of about twenty-five thousand dollars to cover any costs going forward. But from that, um, it's about five on one and a little bit more on the other one. Then you get to recoup some of my costs, some of John's ad pro costs and things like that.
Okay, so I have a question. Sure. So this five thousand dollars that this resolution is for you, you're gonna get that reimbursed?
Pretty much, yes. I mean, that's, yeah. It's, it's not a, it's not a like-for-like, it's just a recognition by the redevelopment that the town to get to this point, um, incurred some cost and financial expenses. Technically, you're not supposed to be able to hit an ad pro until you designate a redeveloper.
But we already did that through Palmer. No, we didn't.
Okay, no.
No.
No, we haven't, no need.
No.
Designated. We, we only have the plan, redevelopment plan.
Yeah.
And we should speed it up a little. Next week, next one, next meeting. Well, we have, we have to review his, the agreement first.
Of course. But there, there is a, a call back for a reversion of recognizing some of our costs.
Okay, but my question is, when are the, these costs gonna, uh, you know, I mean, it seems like first it was, um, seven thousand dollars, then we did another five thousand dollars a month ago. Now we're doing another five thousand dollars. Is next month gonna be another five thousand dollars? I mean, how? Well, here's, here's the one thing, when we did the original resolution, we had no idea how much time Joe was gonna put in, so we just picked a number at random. That was not a solid number by any means.
That was, that was a number picked by Tom, right?
Yeah.
That wasn't involved with that.
It wasn't, if Joe didn't give us that number and say, hey, it's gonna cost you this much. So as we've been progressing with these two different projects.
And quite frankly, I mean comparatively, if you went to other projects in other towns and things like that, the amount of time that I've built to this is not really acceptable in terms of, in value respect. Or two redevelopment projects that say that, uh, your returning time is, you know, twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand is not quite frankly a lot for the amount of back and forth that needs to make it happen.
Uh, and then twenty-three, one twenty-seven, Jack, that is the green, uh, green acres for the encouragement on.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. Finally taking another step on this process.
Right, I got, I think a whole lot of maps now.
Okay. I can't believe this is gonna, how many years I've never done this, really?
I don't wanna think of that.
Yeah, crazy. Anything else?
I'll move resolution twenty-three, one nineteen, two hundred and seventy-seven.
Thanks. Uh, local, please.
Mr. Mallow?
Yes.
Mr. Mallow?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Angeline?
Yes.
Okay, um, banners update, um, let's see, it was May twenty-third. Uh, Nancy and I met with Bank Cliff Engineering to go over the initial assessment report. You recall, we had a study done to see if the Highlands was an option. Um, he was very complimentary and said, we have a very robust master plan, an open space plan. Uh, the next step is to apply for the, there's another grant that then takes us a little further into the process where we actually get feedback, I think, from the Highlands uh, as to if there's any changes we need to make. But, um, again, they have a grant to pay for that, so, um, where are we right now with that? I think we're, we have.
Yeah, we have a meeting on Friday.
Right, sorry.
We have so much kind of planning and, um, uh, John Zabo is reviewing Bank Cliff's report.
Okay, and, yeah, I think that's right. They told us to have our planner and engineer go at it.
Right, um, so we're waiting for that and then we're having a meeting on the twenty-ninth with Walker Lane and then figure out after that.
What the next step is. Okay, but we're moving it along. Um, we had a centennial committee meeting, the logo contest is still open, so any artists out there who would like to design a centennial?
It's three, some of the.
We have three, three submissions so far, so we can still take more. Uh, what is it? June thirtieth is the last day?
Uh, he sent it into July.
July thirtieth?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Didn't release it until, oh, fair.
All right, so you've got another one to create. Um, November, the November fourth kickoff, uh, we are gonna, we renamed it back in time, but up to time.
Yeah.
And so, yeah. Uh, and we are looking for people to help with that event. We have lots of different committees pulling that together, so if anyone would like to be involved in that, it would be a fun, fun thing to do. And then what we decided to do was each month we'll celebrate a decade with some kind of an event. It may not really, it may not be a big thing, uh, might just be a movie night or, you know, not a big fancy expensive thing, but just something commemorating like January would be the twenties, February we do the thirties, you know, and, and all different things. Uh, one of the things we talked about, see France here, is February is maybe doing a history of immigration in Burnsville. You know, who are the people that came here and what did they contribute to have a display of some kind. So, yeah, we've got a lot of different ideas going around, so. Um, also on the twenty-fourth, um, I was honored to receive the Wilson Fenwick Award from the Somerset County Federation of Republican Women. Thank you, uh, Nancy was there, Al was there, so thank you. Um, we have the Memorial Day Parade on the twenty-ninth, the weather cooperated. I think it was really, um, you know, a few people commented that they didn't think it was as well-attended as the past, but I think that may have been because of the five-day weekend that the kids got, so a lot of that went away. But those that came was great, the speaker was great, um, it was really well done. Um, I attended my first board meeting for the New Jersey Conference of Mayors and again, there's a big push to write to your legislators, let them know about the energy tax reforms that we want them back, we want that restored. So if you have a chance, call your legislator and remind them, we want that back in the budget. Um, and they also, the lead did a special briefing on that as well. I think we ended up with, right now, four hundred and twenty-two mayors that signed a petition to record them, so. Uh, the downtown Burnsville car show was, was a great event, great afternoon, uh, again, perfect weather, uh, and really good attend. How many people did you have there? If you count parents, yeah. No idea.
A lot.
A lot, a lot. I'm gonna hope for lunch, because the line was so long.
It's so long.
Thousand, I wanna say.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, I also attended the Somerset County office on hating being every year, the requires to do a public hearing um, in order to continue getting your federal funding and it's just really amazing what kind of programs are out there. They always say they're the best kept secret, Somerset County. So, um, hopefully we'll be sharing some of that because there's a lot of people in our community who use those services. I attended the Somerset Hills Magazine, you know, that new shiny magazine, you can get them at home. Um, the publishers had a little mixer for some of their advertisers and businesses at Hope Bay's, which is really well done. If you haven't been there, um, yeah, it's nice, loud, but nice.
Should be in Burnsville.
Yeah.
Very big fan of it. I, I, I wish it was still.
Can I change the one? The, can I change the, the?
Yeah, we just moved the sign. I know.
They don't want it.
Pretty good, nice.
I, I totally didn't do it.
Yes, I know. Uh, but we had a downtown Burnsville board meeting, so we heard about a lot of those cool things going on. Um, I attended a library strategic planning committee with, uh, working on all four, engaging the community. Lots of good ideas generated, so, um, thank you for the invitation. I have another wedding officiated on Friday. This was an interesting story. They actually had a ceremony many years ago, but never did the paperwork.
Oh, my God.
So, yeah, we made it official. Yeah. Uh, the farmer's market opened on Saturday. We, we was mobbed. I don't know if anybody got down there. It was really packed, very busy, uh, a lot of stuff was sold out and they, they're during break, so good to see them going. Um, I attended Mr. T's album debut at Dance Local. You can get a copy of his album at the Rebecca Collection. It's really a, a great collection of songs for kids, so a good present. Um, and yesterday I attended John Taber's Eagle Scout Port, Tober's Port of Honor. Um, and I got to present, um, a resolution from Congressman Kane. So it was a great event and what I'd like to do, um, I've done a a proclamation that I'd like us all to be part of, so I'll just read it to you. Whereas John Tober has proven himself to be an outstanding member of, member of the Boy Scouts of America and specifically Boy Scout Troop one fifty and has achieved the highest rank of Eagle Scout. And whereas it takes years of dedication and commitment to achieve Eagle rank. And whereas Eagle Scouts act as leaders and role models in the community. And whereas the Eagle Scout Award is a distinction that will follow him throughout life and will be a beacon to others of the leadership quality and commitment this young man has shown. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and council of the Borough of Burnsville do hereby congratulate and recognize John Tober for his achievement of the rank of Eagle Scout. We are proud to have him as a member of our community. Yes, we're all good with that?
I'm sure.
All right, um, so I'll have Anthony make a nice folder and we'll, we'll do that upgrade. Um, yeah, he has been amazing. I mean, if you ever come to Reese's Across America, he has been, you know, I asked him to help and everywhere he shows up, he's got twelve scouts with him. He's just, he's got such great leadership skills. The, the troop will do anything he wants them to do. He's, he's terrific. So, uh, and that's it for me. Yeah, oh, tomorrow I have to go to the airport and boy. Uh, we are getting a store order assistance grant for, I think it's green infrastructure that, um, we applied for, so. Let you know, I'm accepting it. I don't, I don't know how much it is.
Yeah, it's a big secret.
Yeah, they're just gonna like, you know, they wanted us all to come and they're gonna do a thing.
Is it worth, I don't remember the.
And what's for a study for, uh, green infrastructure, I think, is how, you know, to look at how our infrastructure is and how we can improve it. We make it, we're there, less harsh on the environment.
I don't remember listening. Do you, Christine?
I think, I think, you know, we said the engineering applied for, for our, for our.
This doesn't have to do with, remember the whole light engineering evaluation that we did? It was, it's not this, is it?
No, no, this is more like our, um, I think it's, they're all getting the squares of the wastewater and that and see how we can do it better. Find out tomorrow. All right, that's my story. Nancy, where at?
So we have an official date for the, um, Motor Vehicle Commission and Service Unit, the July twenty-second. Uh, we did it Saturday. Uh, we're lucky to get, because they say they don't often do Saturdays, so we're lucky and they will be here, uh, ten A M. to two P M. at the Burnsville Farming Market. So we took the far end of the farming market that will be for the bus or van, whatever you wanna call it. Um, the woman who heads up the farming market is excited about it. I think, you know, it will help maybe attract more people for, to go to the market. Uh, but the thing is that if they don't have enough advanced sign-ups, they won't come. So we're trying to advertise it and get the word out, um. You can sign up if you already have, um, a, an article on our website at the top. You just click on it and you go on and you sign on a Google form to, you know, her, so the appointment is just saying that you will be there. Those, they'll, you have a spot so that if enough people sign up, those, those come. If enough people don't sign up, they won't come. Um, you do need, uh, uh, a time spot, um, for the real ID. But, and they suggest time slots which is why you're signing up, but they will take walking. So if they have, if their minimums, let's say twenty-five people, they're twenty-five sign-ups, it doesn't mean that they're, you know, that's it. People can just walk up and get their license renewed or whatever. There's a bunch of things you can do, um. Actually, I don't know, license, I know one of them, but you can either do registration, um, you can get your permit for your driver's license, but not your test. You can get a disability card, a boat sticker, uh, put a veteran designation on your license. You can get a non-driver ID and name change and like I said, the real ID, um. Uh, C D L exams, titles and out-of-state transfers are not performed at the monthly unit. Um, so there's information, um, on our website for what you need for the real ID. There's information for, or there's the link where you can sign up. Uh, we put it on Facebook, our Facebook page, we put it on our website, so we're hoping. And I'll keep announcing at every meeting and hopefully the newspaper will say something, so we'll get it.
Charlie?
So we'll get enough people there. Um, and, uh, we got a new from, uh, D O T. They're gonna be improving the, improving the side, the crosswalks on, uh, two oh two. Um, over by the shopery, there's one by shopery and there's one right in front of P and C Bank and T V Bank.
Yes.
So they're gonna be improving them with, um, better signage and lighting and they're gonna have those little buttons that you push when you want.
Wait, really?
Yeah.
The, uh, the crosswalk. Going north on Mount Erie on the way to prospect.
That's looking a little the fastest.
I'm not.
So, uh, if the D O T is going to be in town, I know that the safety, uh, committee had discussed this, the crosswalk going north on Mount Erie or something. Is there anybody?
Oh, adding an extra one.
It can be added in that as well.
That's the county.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll get there.
Okay.
Do they say when?
The efficiency bureaucracy is continuing to undermine that.
Um, they didn't say when, but the initial, um, letter came in in November and the, uh, I, I was actually on the phone um, with the woman from D O T. We have, we'll talk about that later in the executive, but she said, by the way, if you sent this letter in November, uh, October, November, can you just say that you're, you know, are you okay with it? And I talked to, um, Lee G and the D P W, they're, and obviously they're okay with it, anything that's gonna be shady. So, uh, there was no date on the letter. Uh, I mean, there's no date of when they're gonna do it, but now that we've given them the okay, you know, hopefully they'll get back to you when this is gonna be. I assume, I assume this year.
Yeah.
You know, but let me just say it doesn't, so, so, no, we don't want this.
Yeah.
And, uh, you voted tonight on, uh, resolution one twenty-six. And, uh, you voted tonight on, uh, resolution 126 to amend the contract with Somerset County transportation. That is just to add, um, the senior bus on Fridays, eight people around town. And they had a request to add in to go to King and Benminster. So they did it, um, it doesn't cost us anymore and just expand the places they go. So hopefully it'll expand the, um, ridership as well. And I think we're going to do some more advertising of that on Facebook and our website as well, to get more people aware of it and hopefully more riders, you know. And, um, I just want to announce that the construction and zoning offices are open now at 7:30 AM and will remain open until 4:30 AM, uh, 4:30 to 9:00 AM.
Yeah.
Um, on most days, uh, there's only one employee who come in at 7:30. So when she's on vacation or at sick, uh, they, it won't open at 7:30. But when we have enough advanced notice, like vacation, we'll also put that on our website, the, the days it won't be open. But it's a benefit for the employees, it's a benefit for residents and especially for contractors who always want to get an early start. So, um, we think that's a nice addition. Yeah, and that's all I.
Thank you. All right, we have the request from community in crisis to do the ribbon hanging that they do every year, the local ribbons um, for overdose awareness. Starts on August 31st. Um, we've done this the last two or three years, I think. So everyone okay with that?
No.
Is there an end day that, that they have to be taking down? Uh, I think it's setting. September 30th. Yeah, they usually get, um, either the middle school or high school, their youth tour or whatever they have there that puts them up, pays them down. And Cici, they'll all be removed by noon on October 1st. Right, um. We didn't have any correspondence. You have any unfinished business?
Just mentioned, real quick. Uh, I have to on a note today, Mayor, some gladness. Um, I brought up, uh, issues that residents were having in like the Bell Hill, Charlotte Hill area around Verizon coverage. And, um, I got in touch with, uh, the Verizon representative and they have been extremely helpful. Um, they've sent network teams out to try to improve the coverage of the area. They've talked to residents personally. They've been very impressed by, uh, service that we've gotten as a borough. So, um, I gotta give credit where it starts due, right? I'm complaining about public utilities, but, uh, they, they've really done a, a really, I don't know if everything's a hundred percent resolved yet, but we've seen, um, an increase in coverage. And I just want to thank your team that's been helping out Burnsville.
Great, yeah, I can see your, your email. That was great. It's nice to have good news. Um, new business? I just have one question for you guys, um. It was in Kathy Peachey's letter that she gave us this time. I don't know, Ruchi suggested changing from three minutes to five minutes for public hearings. Um, I don't know if that was something you want to talk about or not.
I mean, it depends.
Uh, fine.
Yeah, I don't think I would blanket it. I, I wouldn't want to get it all the time because if there's 100 residents, they could last them two days.
Yeah. Um. And yeah, that's a lot. Um.
No, but I.
Always, I think.
But we did it.
It's my discretion that if I feel like people need to go older, they can represent their job. Yes. So we don't, I mean, not to go through a whole ordinance change. Maybe we just make it when there's nobody here. If there's five people and they want to each talk for five minutes, that would be fine. If there's 100 people, then we have to enforce the three minutes.
Three minutes is a lot longer than that.
It is, yeah.
Um, I run an entire company at five minute, three to five minute education training sessions. So you can go a lot in your three minutes, is that what I mean?
Yeah, it's a, it's a. Say a laundry right there. Yes.
Big burners town before that, right?
I don't know.
I mean, I'm not doing.
I think we're in the tax side, I think.
You think that's.
Yeah. I mean, maybe officially with the flexibility.
Yeah, I think the flexibility is important. Yeah, I mean, look, I, I can't think of the times when you had like the three minutes hasn't worked.
That's true.
And you meet and you got a lot of people. Yeah. And we offer multiple sessions and there's always a lot of people stand up more than once. You go, go twice, exactly.
Except to the first meeting, they get once.
Yeah.
Second meeting, they get twice.
But they can come back up, I think, as Chuck said.
Yes, yeah, I mean, and a lot of people don't allow that. I, I know, I asked some of the people with the five minutes, they said you wanted that. So we let people do three and three. That's true. All right, well, something to think about.
It's not really.
Well.
It's not really.
It hasn't been, no. You know, there's a few rare cases. Um, and then in some sense, incidentally, we did let people go on. I have a question. If somebody, uh, I know they do this at the school board. If somebody is talking for three minutes and the twenty is up, can somebody else in the audience say, you can have more time?
Okay.
No.
I'd say no.
I know, I mean, they'll let it happen once, but it really shouldn't.
You, you know, I, I think to the point, one of the things that we can get better at is if there's a issue, because you, you're right, it doesn't happen very often. And the times when, when it does, I think we should probably be in town hall commerce format other than council business format. And I think it's probably proven for us to recognize this difference.
Well, that's like what, when we knew Burnsville was gonna be such a thing. But we were.
Yeah, we went there.
Yeah.
Well, there's a difference, you're right, between the two. This is a council meeting held in public. It's not a public hearing, a public meeting. It's a council business meeting that we hold in public. So people can be here and know what's going on. Um, as opposed to like what we did in, down in the, uh, when it's a neighborhood, it was, okay, you know, this is an open format. And maybe we should do more open formats at some point.
I think that's what I'm getting from it. I think we need to do.
What we have, you know.
September, we're a better work session. I'm just like, it's a work session, woman.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's for September, yeah.
If it's an ordinance, that's public comment, those are three minutes too, right? When when it's a public hearing for ordinances, do we use?
Yeah, no.
Yeah, it's.
I, I don't think it's actually doing it, just there, I just.
Okay, that's something progress. All right, we are ready for executive. Somebody want to make a motion? I will make a motion to adjourn to executive.
I will second.
All right, um, we will not be coming back or?
Uh, we will not.
Okay, we will not reopen. Um, we're. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. All right.